Good afternoon. It is January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is now five thirty P M. And I would like to call this meeting to order. And I would ask that you rise for the invocation. And tonight, we will have a special pledge of allegiance with our Boy Scouts that will help us in the pledge of allegiance. So Councilmember Henigan.
Father, thank you for the guests that we have here tonight, these young men that are running to give citizens for their sponsors willing to pour into their lives. Lord, we ask you that you guide our thoughts and discussion tonight as we make decisions on behalf of the citizens of Orange. And these things we ask in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I would like to be pleased to be the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Henigan. Thank you to our Boy Scouts group. Okay, thank you, Ms. Henigan, and thank you once again to our Boy Scouts group. We will now move to item three, motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one two zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes on to item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker, and your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, I have several names on my list. The first is Ms. Mary Fetch. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Mr. Mary, I would like to defer to Dr. Kelly Kayes and reserve, if possible, reserve my time for just a comment after.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
She's doing a comprehensive presentation of the topic.
Okay, next we have Ms. Kelly Kayes. Please come forward.
Hi, Kelly Kayes, four six seven one eight I H ten, East Winnie, Texas. I'm the veterinarian that two years ago I was on TV because Fort Arthur was contemplating going no kill. And your animal control officer called me because he saw me on TV. And he said, I would love to have a T N R program. Imagine his job. He gets calls about cats that it's complaining. And he says, well, I can go catch them, but they're wild. And he knows in his mind, all he can do is euthanize them. So that's his job. That's a stressful thing with not a happy outcome. Trap, neuter, and release gives him a happy outcome. He can tell people, I can come and I can trap them, and I can get, make sure they're healthy, spay them, neuter them, stop the problem, vaccinate, and then I can turn them loose. And then he has to have the backup of an ordinance that says he can come back and turn them loose. And then people have to explain that because they've been fixed, the problem's gonna stop. The tomcat urine won't smell, there won't be littering, all those things. And so two years later, here we are. Beaumont Pets Alive did a lot of work in the City of Orange last year. We said we would save a hundred and fifty cats. We saved three hundred and fifty cats from the City of Orange. We said we would save fifty dogs. We saved sixty-nine. We raised the live release rate to seventy-five percent. I don't have the capacity to do lots of dogs, or we would have done more because we did every cat. So we did not get another best friends grant because they wanted us to be closer to ninety percent, you know, or they wanted to see some real change in the city. So I still want to work with the city. I still want to continue on this journey. So I'm imploring y'all to pass the ordinances that your animal control officer asked for two years ago. Let him have a T N R program. Let him not have to euthanize every cat he picks up. Let me work with the local vets. Use your vets. But I can tell you, because I'm a vet, if you're in for profit, you don't want to do all these inexpensive spays and neuters. So let me come and help them. Let me be a vendor. Let me help them. And let's good. So I offered you Beaumont City's actual ordinances that we did when we did T N R there. But we're running out of time this spring. We're about to have littering season. And I'll remind you, I said two cats in ten years make sixty-eight thousand. So if we can get this ordinance read and then passed and get these cats starting to get them neutered and spayed before kitten season, it would be great advantage. We would help a lot with the number. So please consider. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Mary Ann Fedgeon. I'm the executive director of a spay-neuter program here in Orange called Saving Nine Lives, which is a trap-neuter return advocacy group. We spayed and neutered many, many cats for clients here in Orange and all over southeast Texas, actually. In fact, I had a client today at Dr. Foskey's office getting a cat spayed from the Bailey Fish Camp Colony that you probably have heard of. That's a huge colony of cats that where people dump cats. And so she was able to pick up one of those cats, and we worked together to get it in and get it spayed today. So it does work. It's effective. It's been proven effective in cities of all size, from Dallas-sized cities to Nederland-sized cities, which is about the size of Orange, eighteen thousand. And it's, you know, as I say, it's very effective in reducing the population. And it is humane. It's the humane alternative to trap and kill, which nobody really wants to do. So anyway, I just want to say that I appreciate all the work that Dr. Kayes has done here on behalf of the citizens and pets of Orange, Texas. And I hope that you will follow her recommendations and do pass a T N R ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next on our list, we have David Baldriz.
Good morning. Good afternoon. David Baldriz, sixty-three ten Tanglebrush Trail, Orange, Texas, seven, seven, six, three, two. I'm here to speak out in favor of the trap-neuter return program that Dr. Kayes has outlined. I've spoken to a number of people around the community, and I know there's a lot of support for that program to help reduce the number of animals that are stray. I want to thank the mayor, the city council, city manager, and all others involved that found money to start off a trap-neuter return program. This year, I know it's been a tight budget year. I said it on one of your previous meetings, and it seemed like you were pretty tight on budget. So I really do appreciate you finding the money to get that kicked off. And I just want to say that in favor of the program. And also, I'd like to see the ordinance changes that Dr. Kayes has mentioned. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Ms. Candace Bilbo.
Hello, my name is Candace Bilbo. I live at forty-six hundred Stallion. I am back again once to promote the V F W. We have a benefit fundraiser event coming up February the eighth. Sorry, excuse me, I got tongue-tied. March eighth. I wanted to give y'all some numbers from last year I'm super proud of. We started in March, a very small event. We had roughly about forty-six vendors. We raised, from my portion, was about three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Wasn't good enough. The next one we did in May, we raised twelve hundred dollars. And this is just my section. And then in December, we had a huge outpouring. We raised two thousand and forty dollars. So our totals for last year, just my portion, was three thousand, three seventy. The auxiliary group tripled and quadrupled their sales. In the kitchen, we ran out of gumbo at Christmas. We ran out of chili. The ladies in there were elated. I honestly wore my heart on my sleeve all day because the outpouring. We literally could not keep people coming in that building. In the traffic was just crazy. We had some local cadets that came out and helped. They were a huge help. I thought they were Boy Scouts. They were fifteen-year-old young men. And they took the reins, helped me in the parking lot, which was a huge success. It helped flow. The vendors that I have are amazing. We have everything from crafting vendors, yard signs, wreaths, bakers. Ms. Mary, she's the president of the auxiliary. She does weaving baskets. So we have something for everybody. I would like to give y'all some flyers for this next event. We will have Larry Tillery out there again. We will have a petting zoo. We will have food once again in the kitchen. They will, all those proceeds go directly to the veterans. So if y'all could share that, post it in your business, we'd appreciate it. Once again, it's March the eighth, and I appreciate y'all sharing this on the orange.gov page. I think that was a huge push for us and also Orange Explorer. That is followed by the community. I have a huge following, and the vendors follow me. So having community support was just such a big plug because it is going towards a great cause. My Papa served, I fought, and my daddy served, so it means something to me. It's not just an event. It's, there is a purpose. We did a diaper drive at Christmas, and the stage was full of diapers and Depends. So those went to the local nursing homes, and the Depends, the diapers went to actual veteran families that were in need. So I appreciate y'all's support, and I hope you can come out on March the ninth. Excuse me, March eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the people that we had on our list. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council before I close the comments? Okay, all right, I will close citizen comments and move to city announcements, item five A, city staff announcements and city events. Ms. Allison.
Good evening, council, and happy Mardi Gras, y'all. Mardi Gras on the Sibenee is headed back to Orange, Texas. We've got a weekend full of food, music, and a parade and fun for the whole family. So whether you're there for the beads, or for the food, or for the music, or just a good time, come and celebrate Mardi Gras with us and wear your best purple, green, gold, and orange. So Explore Orange is setting the stage for Friday night with food vendors and a DJ to get you dancing and to kick off the weekend. And then the tradition continues on Saturday, the twenty-first, with the annual Crew of Cruz Parade, which is hosted by the Greater Orange Area Chamber of Commerce. And the parade will wind its way through downtown Orange with floats decked out in Mardi Gras decor, and they'll be tossing beads and trinkets and everything else. As we do with all of our events, some of our advertising efforts for Mardi Gras specifically include, but aren't limited to, a press release to the local media. We advertise on our website, on the City of Orange homepage, as well as the Explore Orange section of the website, all of our social media platforms, including Explore Orange, the Facebook and Instagram page, as well as the City of Orange Facebook page. We have a promotional banner, or we have two promotional banners at Lyonsden Park and at Sunset Park that you can see from Sixteenth Street and MacArthur. We also have the big banner that goes across Sixteenth Street that'll be going up soon. We have a billboard. We took out an ad in the County Record. Of course, City Hall has a digital sign out front that we advertise on. We have the TVs in the lobby that we put the graphic up on, as well as some other signage in the lobby. Then in addition to this, we're working in partnership with the Greater Orange Area Chamber of Commerce to support them in their advertising efforts as well. So just to recap, Friday, the twenty-first, it's at Riverside Pavilion, and that'll be gates will open at five. We'll have food vendors and DJ entertainment from five until nine. And then Saturday will be the Crew of Cruz Parade in downtown Orange, and the parade rolls at six. And a little land, like, excuse me, a little land map for you is Together Thursdays by Dow and United Way is that Thursday on the twentieth. And I believe it's at six-thirty, and it's Paperchase is gonna be playing. So I know Mardi Gras is a celebration of our community, of our tradition and our regional culture. So bring your crew out and let's pass a good time. And as always, laissez-le bon temps rouler, and let the good times roll.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you for that announcement. We'll move to item six, consent agenda. December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes, and also January fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-five, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes on to item seven A, ordinances. Considering the ordinance of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, authorizing participation with other intergy service area cities in matters concerning Intergy Texas Incorporated at the Public Utility Commission of Texas in two thousand and twenty-five, authorizing the hiring of lawyers and rate experts, authorizing the city's participation to the full extent permitted by law at the Public Utility Commission of Texas, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act, and declaring an effective date. The first reading was on January fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Coost.
Good evening, American council. Again, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, this is just basically, if you will, renewing our relationship with the law and law to represent us in certain public utility matters.
Any questions or comments? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item eight A, consider a resolution ordering a general election for the purpose of electing a council member for place two, single-member district two, a council member for place four, single-member district four, and a council member for place five at large, providing for the date, hours, ballot, early voting clerk, and notice of election, providing for polling places and judges, providing for other matters relating to the city election, ordering a runoff election, if necessary, to be held on June seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, and determining that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law. Ms. Gina?
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Council.
Tonight, the city secretary's office is presenting two resolutions for your consideration. The first resolution is ordering and giving notice of the May third, two thousand and twenty-five, general election for the City of Orange. This election will be for three positions on council. Council member place two, single-member district, council member place four, single-member district, and council member place five at large. All positions are three-year terms. Filing for a place on the ballot began on Wednesday, January fifteenth, and will end on Friday, February fourteenth, at five P M. Candidate packets may be picked up in the city secretary's office located at City Hall, eight twelve North Sixteenth Street. Early voting by personal appearance will begin on Tuesday, April twenty-second, through Friday, April twenty-fifth, from eight A M. to five P M. And on Monday, April twenty-eighth, and Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, from seven A M. to seven P M. Election Day, Saturday, May third, polls will be open from seven A M. to seven P M. As a reminder, Orange County adopted countywide polling, allowing the voters the convenience to vote at any polling location during early voting and on election day.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poole. Any questions or comments from Ms. Poole? Okay, all right. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And I'm gonna make sure that before I'm done being mayor, I'm gonna be able to say that next part fluently in Spanish. I'm gonna be ready. One day, I'm gonna do it. Y'all gonna be like, oh, man. All right, item eight B is consider a resolution entering into a joint election agreement services contract with the Orange County Elections Administrator to provide election services for the City of Orange. Ms. Poole.
This resolution is entering into a joint election agreement services contract with the Orange County Elections Administrator to provide election services for the two thousand and twenty-five general election for the City of Orange, and if necessary, a runoff election to be held on June seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. All of the political subdivisions of Orange County will also enter into the same joint election agreement contract.
Okay, any questions or comments from Ms. Poole? Okay, if not, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Poole.
Thank you.
Okay. On to item eight C, consider a resolution approving the submission of an applicant for the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, here and after referred to as A S P C A, two thousand and twenty-four National Shelter Initiative Grants, Animal Psychological Health Grant for the two thousand and twenty-five year at no cost to the city, and designation of individual authorized to represent the city in all matters pertaining to the grant. Mr. Bilbo.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We're looking at getting forty-six thousand, two hundred dollars to create a play space of sorts for the animals, not the animal shelter. It would be a, hate to use the term, but kind of a private dog park. It's the way it's gonna be designed. It's gonna have activities for the animals to do for, just to get them out of the cages. It's a pla, it's a place that the future adoptees can take the dog out of the dog pound and have a place to go interact with it.
Okay.
And, yeah, yeah, see how, see how they, they jive together. And really, really, that's it.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it only for, it's only for to leave the dog?
Well, I, you know, if we put a cage enclosure out there, I guess you could throw a cat in it, but you ain't keeping a cat in a fence, so. Cats and dogs.
Yeah, that's it.
We got a horse right now. But he's got a barn. Yeah. Yeah. Horse, I think, will be ready for adoption next week.
Okay, good.
And I recommend y'all designate city managers, the person assigned, which is around here, breaking down the society.
Yeah, sounds good. So thank you for bringing this to us, especially with Ms. Kayes and Ms. Fetch coming forward tonight. Again, so this is just showing you, we are continuing to work to improve, looking for grants. We know, I know we established our city as a no-kill last year. And so as we continue to improve and do all that we can, thank you to you and staff for helping us reach that. So with that being said, there will be a motion to approve with the city manager as the individual authorized to represent the city. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
One bite at a time.
All right.
It'd be great for your volunteer program.
Okay, item eight D, consider a resolution of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, affirming support for the Orange Trails development for affordable rental housing for seniors at West Side of Twenty-seventh Street, north of Edelman Road, providing that the City of Orange supports the development and confirming that the city council has voted specifically to approve the construction of the project and authorizes an allocation of housing tax credits for the development, providing a de minimis commitment to the Orange Trails development and providing an effective date. Mr. Knopf.
This is a resolution which would support the Orange Trails senior living tax credit apartments. These are not such an eight housing, you know, what most people think of as low-income housing. This is an entirely different program that's through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. And it allows private investment into projects. And then for people that maybe have, their income is less than the median income for the area to rent those apartments. And then the developer gets to take, you know, money off of their income tax from that. So it's a real incentive for private investment. And what they're looking at is property that's located on Twenty-seventh Street, north of the hotels. And there's a map in your, in your packet showing where the location is. But it's, this development is on property that's currently zoned I D C, which is Interstate Development Corridor, and which does not allow apartments, but it's adjacent to property that is zoned R three, which is apartment zoning. So if the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs approves this application, then we would need to go through a rezoning process. But from a planning standpoint, it makes really good sense that we have apartments between commercial and adjoining residential properties. It's, it's a good buffer from a planning standpoint. So we have Alice Woods, who's the applicant here, and she's got a PowerPoint presentation on the project that she would like to present to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Knopf. It's the place is behind Dicky's barbecue.
Thank you, Mr. Knopf, and hi, Mayor Spears and council. I'm Alice Woods with Trinity Housing Development. Really grateful for the opportunity to tell you a little bit more about Orange Trails, our proposed senior housing community today. A little bit of background on Trinity Housing Development. We are a workforce development group that specializes in senior and family mixed-income communities throughout Texas. We have local offices in Houston and Tyler. And we really take pride in identifying communities where there's a need for affordable housing and then working closely with community leaders to provide not only housing solutions that meet the city's needs, but also jobs for the local economy. All of our developments have onsite amenities for residents, including community kitchens, fitness centers, cyber lounges, shared green space, and onsite leasing centers. We also partner with nonprofit service providers to provide free classes and community events for residents. And at our senior communities in particular, like the one that we're proposing here in Orange, we find that residents really do participate in these events and take advantage of the community spaces. We work hard to build very social, active, and neighborly communities. So the units themselves are built with high-quality, resilient, and sustainable materials that will last a long time and, of course, make for comfortable, safe homes for our residents. We use vinyl plank flooring, solid surface quartz or granite countertops, and include high-efficiency kitchen appliances, as well as washer dryer hookups. This map shows our existing developments, as well as a few that are in pre-development throughout Texas. As you can see, we've built all over Texas and in many different types and sizes of cities. And we really take the local context into account as we design and build. We've approved a track record of successful long-term development and ownership of these housing tax credit communities. And I'll also just take a brief moment here to tell you a little bit more about the housing tax credit program. This is a program that was created as part of the Tax Reform Act of nineteen sixty-eight, and since then has been the most successful national program in creating affordable housing units because it allows for a public-private partnership model where private developers like Trinity create mixed-income communities using federal tax credits to finance the equity in their projects. And inherent in that public-private partnership model is a lot of oversight and compliance requirements. So the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, or T D H C A, which allocates the tax credits at the state level, has their own oversight and inspection process. Our equity investors do their own inspections. And as a developer, we're highly motivated, not just by our belief in high-quality housing, but by all of this oversight and compliance and the layers inherent in this program to make sure that our properties are maintained at an extremely high level. So looking at the site specifically, we selected this location, which is roughly at Clark Circle and Twenty-seventh Street because we think it's an excellent place for active seniors to live. It's close to grocery stores, pharmacies, medical clinics, and parks, as you can see on this map. And if you've been by there recently, you know that it's also a site that's in need of some love. It's quite overgrown at the moment and would be a real improvement to the surrounding area through some landscaping and development. From a zoning perspective, as you heard, the site is currently zoned Interstate Development Corridor, but is adjacent to R three zoning, making it an appropriate location for R three zoning, which is what we've requested. And from a planning perspective, again, as you heard, this development, the development of the site as a two-story residential building makes sense kind of as a transitional buffer between the hotels that are adjacent to the interstate and then the single-family uses behind it. And I'll also note that this is a less intensive use than what would already be allowed under I D C zoning on this lot. So getting into the project specifics, the proposed community will be sixty-three units in a two-story elevator-served building. The units themselves will be one- and two-bedroom units for independent seniors. And our rents are set by T D H C A and are based on the median family income of Orange County. So rents for one-bedroom units would be between approximately four hundred and forty and eight hundred and eighty dollars per month, while rents for the two-bedroom units would be between five hundred and thirty and one thousand and fifty dollars per month. And that's dependent on the resident's income levels. Trinity Housing Development will build and then maintain long-term ownership of this community. Our housing tax credit funding requires us to maintain ownership for a minimum of fifteen years, but we have no intent to sell. At that point, our business model is to hold on to and manage these communities long-term. During construction, we always aim to work with local tradespeople and subcontractors, creating jobs in the local. During construction, we always aim to work with local tradespeople and subcontractors, creating jobs in the local economy. And finally, we are not requesting a property tax exemption or waiver for this project. It will remain on the tax rolls as an approximately twelve million dollar new investment in Orange. The only thing that we are requesting is a resolution of support for the project, as well as a symbolic two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee waiver. So, with that, having given you, I'm sure, more information about housing tax credits than you've ever wanted, uh, let me say thank you again for the opportunity to present to you this evening, and I hope you'll support this community. We're really excited about the opportunity to work with the city of Orange on this, and I'm available if you have any other questions.
Alright, well, thank you for that presentation. Um, any questions from council? Any comments? Well.
Did you work with the housing authority here, or is, that's just, you're a a business of your own and, and independent and all that?
Yeah, we're a private developer, and we, we partner with Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs to receive the housing tax credits, but the project would be entirely owned and operated privately and would not be in partnership with the housing authority.
Awesome. So, when do y'all, when, when are you, uh, planning to get started?
So, we will, uh, submit a full application for the housing tax credits on February twenty-eighth, and to get to that point, there's a lot of investment in the project upfront in our architectural engineering plans. Um, and if we're awarded housing tax credits, it's a very competitive process, and there is likely only going to be one project funded in this region. Um, if we're awarded those tax credits, we should know at some point in April, and they'll be officially awarded in July of twenty twenty-five. And then we would likely close on the land and start construction first or second quarter of twenty twenty-six. So, it's kind of a long time horizon, but that's kind of the, the process that we go through working with T D H C A.
Well, I think it's a great project for our community. I actually have, um, an aunt, several aunts that live in one of these communities on the other side of the county, and, um, one of the things that I love about it is, is that when I, when I visited with them recently, the people who live there, like, watch out for each other. It's more like they become a family, and, um, I just, I really had a good time watching all of them open their doors and talk on the porch and things of that nature. So, not only is this gonna beautify that area, but also allow some of our senior citizens to have an affordable place to live. And, uh, with our economy the way that it is at this time, that'll definitely be a blessing to many people. So, thank you for that. Um, with that being said, do we have, if we don't have any more questions or comments, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, item nine A, oh, man. Item nine A, consider a motion awarding the bids for demolition and removal of substandard structures as follows. Ten eighteen, Fourth Street, to Caesar Landscaping and Construction, twenty-three oh eight, Fourth Street, Caesar Landscape and Construction, twenty-six oh seven, Seventh Street, Caesar Landscaping and Construction, thirteen ten, Ninth Street, Lark Group, seven twelve, Tenth Street, C and C Works Incorporated, forty-four oh eight, Bob Hall Road, to the Lark Group, sixteen oh two, Carter Street, Lark Group, twenty-four nineteen, Clark Lane, Lark Group, eight oh two, Dupont Drive, Caesar Landscaping and Construction, eleven ten, Dupont Drive, Caesar Landscaping and Construction, twelve twenty-seven, Dupont Drive, Lark Group, one thousand three, Elm Avenue, Lark Group, two oh seven, Meyer Street, Caesar Landscaping and Construction, twenty-two twenty, Norwood Drive, Man Shack and Sons, seven thirty-five, Old Timers Road, Caesar Landscaping and Construction, nine ten, Rain Avenue, Caesar Landscaping and Construction, twenty-three oh three, Simmons Drive, Caesar Landscaping and Construction. Mr. Knopf?
Uh, on January fourteenth, we, uh, opened bids for the demolition of Selting structures, and these are the lowest and best bidders, and these are the ones that we recommend that the bids be awarded to.
Okay, so, Mr. Knopf, before we go into that, you know, I'm always proud of you and your group, so let me let you brag and help us out. So, for the public that is not aware of what this really entails, over the last several years, we have had the people reach out to us, talking about beautifying the city, cleaning it up, getting rid of dilapidated structures, things that could be used in a negative manner for our community. Mr. Knopf and his group have torn down over how many now?
Oh, this will make about two-hundred-and-fifty.
So, over two-hundred-and-fifty structures in how many?
In the past ten years.
And how many?
Ten, in about the past ten years.
In the past ten years. So, we've been able to successfully remove about two-hundred-and-fifty structures. Now, I think that that's just a testament to your hard work and dedication. Thank you on that.
Yes.
Okay, I also wanna say, um, very looking forward to this, because I know that we were doing our budgets, we had to cut a lot, Mr. Kelvin's group was cut, but now we are able to get this back going, and so thank you for that, okay? Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Knopf? If not, I will make a motion. We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. Item nine B, consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange E D C in the form of a motion of intent approving an E D C incentive with Child's Manufacturing and Building Supply, thirty-seven oh four, North Sixteenth Street, Orange, Texas. The incentive is an amount not to exceed fifty thousand to dis- construct a Tex dot curb cut on the I H ten West Frontage Road for the purpose of economic development. Ms. Hillary Grabit?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Brad Charles with Child's Manufacturing and, uh, Building Supply has previously applied for funding for upgrades in additions to his current building located at Sixteenth Street. There have been some delays due to a curb cut with, curb cut with Tex dot, so that's where this comes from. Once he has received communications now with Tex dot, he has been able to go out for bid for the curb cut and the pouring of the concrete. The pouring of the concrete is going to be approximately sixty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars. So, he has requested an incentive of fifty thousand dollars to assist in covering this, this cost.
Okay, alright, thank you, Ms. Grabit. Do we have any questions or comments for Ms. Grabit concerning this issue? If not, do I have a motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Grabit.
Thank you.
Item nine C, consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange E D C in the form of a motion of intent approving an E D C incentive with U S G Paper LLC at seventeen fifty I P Way, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three two. For eligible infrastructure improvements, the incentives are in an amount not to exceed two-hundred thousand per year over a two-year period, with a total amount not exceeding four-hundred thousand for the purpose of economic development. Mr. Treyanne?
And so, Mayor and Council, the E D C took action previously this evening to formally approve this, uh, motion. And basically, it's targeting infrastructure at the site that we know is International Paper. And fortunately, we have the consultant of record, who's actually been working the project with many leaders at the state, the county, local city level, since the announcement of the closure in October of twenty twenty-three. So, Mr. Sean Rooney, who represents Ryan Consulting, is with us this evening. He does have a presentation to make to share some additional information and future action steps as they work through due diligence. So, I'd like to bring him up to the podium, and he'll run through the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, going through the presentation again. Um, so, uh, as Jay mentioned, the, uh, project at the I P site is, uh, you know, in consideration with U S G. Um, as most of you are aware, U S G, uh, most primarily produces wallboard, which is drywall. And, uh, they have forty-nine locations to the, throughout North America, almost seven thousand employees across the country. And they were looking to expand their, uh, paper product. And they have a current facility in Otsego, Michigan, and they were looking at possibly building a sister site next door to it. They heard about the closure of the, uh, I P site last year and decided that, you know, this has the potential to be something that they could work with. Um, so, they negotiated with I P, they actually have gone back, they purchased the site back in October, end of October of this year, or twenty twenty-four, and are now in their evaluation stage. So, usually, the process for products like this would be, you know, negotiation with, with I P, evaluating the site, seeing if it's something that they can utilize in going forward. This one, because of I P's setup, they were not allowed to go to the site really in-depth ahead of time, so they had to purchase the site, uh, kind of a step one, and then are evaluating it now. Um, so, as they're going through that, uh, they're looking at, you know, what they can use, what they can't, uh, what changes they're gonna have to make in investments. And, and step three will be approval by their board, and step four, uh, assuming the board approves, will be, uh, going forward with the actual project. Uh, so, some high-level information on the project. Uh, I'm sure most of you are familiar with where it is, but the, uh, investment is expected to be upwards of seven-hundred-and-fifteen million dollars over ten years. And they are looking to hire between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty jobs. Uh, a lot of these will probably be rehires of the I P employees. They've already ha- uh, rehired a handful of them, just for familiarity with the plant. Um, average pay will be eighty-one thousand dollars within a hundred and five thousand, including benefits. And if they move forward and they get the green light and everything stays on schedule, they could have construction start as early as Q three, twenty twenty-five, and be up and running by twenty twenty-eight. Uh, investment information, they are looking at about eighty-eight million for buildings. Um, equipment is gonna be the largest portion, um, primarily a new paper machine, and, uh, and then also infrastructure. And you can see listed a handful of the items that they're gonna, uh, be working on as far as upgrades and new items. Um, one of the things to note is their product is three-ply paper versus one ply that I P had. This is going to entail, uh, new paper machine, and all of their goods start as recycled paper. Uh, so, they're gonna have recycled fiber building and storage, uh, and trucking, uh, related to all of that. That's really the high levels of the project. Um, you know, we're excited about it, and, um, you know, every, every step further along the way, the better. So, uh, we're hoping it keeps going forward, and um, you know, everything that the state and local, uh, jurisdictions are doing is, you know, helping them and helping make that decision, and giving them the economic reason to do so.
Okay, thank you so much for this presentation. Um, very excited. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Nobody?
It is an excellent.
Right. Yeah, so I just, I was gonna let them speak first, so I'll, I'll close it by saying, uh, once again, I know we, we spoke in the E D C meeting, but now we have city council. Very excited to have this, very thankful. For those who are in this community, and maybe for those who are tuning in and will see this later on YouTube, two years ago, when International Paper and made the announcement that they were closing, it was detrimental to our community. A lot of people had to figure out what they were gonna do. Um, but we also spoke publicly, and we talked about continuing to trust in God and believing that this was not over. And so, this is a testament that having faith can move mountains. And so, with our E D C staff, thank you, to our E D C board for your work and your initiatives, thank you, to the city council and staff in working to re- create the reinvestment zones and things of that nature to make this happen. I think that a four-hundred-thousand-dollar expenditure from the E D C is definitely worth a return of over seven-hundred million. So, thank you for that. Thank you for the one-hundred-and-twenty to one-hundred-and-fifty jobs, and for helping us to keep Orange prosperous. So, thank you. With that being said, do I have a motion? Can we have a motion, second and a third? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
And Ms. Salter? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Treyanne. Item ten A, city manager report. Mr. Coons?
Hey, Mayor and Council. Uh, give a shout out to our fellow worksmen. We recall last week was very cold, and, uh, there have been, we, we read and see news stories of some of the, uh, our entities in the areas having a lot of problems with their water. We had a few minor problems, but our, uh, our guys got on it and fixed a couple of minor things, but we we were rock and rolling during the event and still rock and roll, and we got something to hang around on. So, thanks to have that and all this. And that's it. Uh, pit master, a pit master at the, that's all my name, so.
Alright, there you go. But you still not getting that, you still ain't getting that jeep, though. Alright, city council report. Let's go ahead and start with Ms. Salter.
Uh, just thanking everybody for coming out today.
Mr. Chandler, I would like to let you come out and report. Um, I took the, uh, liberty of driving around the city, uh, during the snowstorm, about twenty miles an hour. And, um, I saw many city workers, well, I say many, but four city workers in their trucks, going real slow. So, um, it was a beautiful sight. Um, I'm happy to see everybody here tonight, people coming out and see what's going on in our city. Um, thank you for, um, bringing the pet thing to us. I know that's really near and dear to a lot of people in our city. And we said we were gonna do something, and we are. We're a little slow, but we are doing it. So, anyway, I thought I'd say.
Thank you. Ms. Henigan?
Boy Scout, thank you for joining us today. Did you learn something?
Did all the workouts, uh, glad to have you here. Thanks to everybody for being here. It's always great to have people here. And, uh, thank you to the folks that are here to help us out with new jobs, new money, new everything. So, thank you so very much for considering our community to be a part of your community.
And, uh, in closing, I'll say thank you as well. Thank you to our Boy Scouts. You learned their stuff expensive in the city? Did you learn that? Alright, and then, uh, I also wanna thank everyone that is here. Thank you for being a part. Thank you to U S G. Very excited to have that. Can't wait to see my man up there, my, my brother, make that announcement for us, now that we can finally say it's all without me getting in trouble. And also, uh, as, uh, as Paul just said, and as Mike and, and everyone has reiterated, um, I do want to thank city staff for their hard work during the ice storm, also our first responders, and everyone that was involved with helping us get through that. So, this meeting was the last meeting of this month. Our next meeting will be the second Tuesday in February. So, um, all those, all those people that were involved in, in fixing the busted line when it was like nineteen degrees outside, Mr. Jack, we would love to have them join us for that morning meeting so that we can properly recognize them and say thank you, because they deserve it, okay? And with that being said, once again, God bless you all. Let me, let me make sure I get this right. Oh, we have no executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We get to go get something to eat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
God bless y'all. Meeting adjourned. Yay. We get to go before nine o'clock.